Roll call, please.
Craig Kusel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Riley Thurgood.
Here. You're all email a copy of the minutes from our November fifteenth meeting. If you had a chance to review those, I'd like a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. A motion from Wiley, a second from Craig to approve the minutes from November fifteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. First thing on the agenda tonight is a request from Main Street to carry over our, the unspent funds from the facade money this year. Tony Murray and Melissa, I believe, are going to tag team on this. Give us some figures.
Spent some money. Needs some more money.
Get that, Bob?
When the program was approved, City Council agreed to grant fifty thousand dollars a year for five years. The current program is funded with seed up funds and it's a two-year loop that we're doing. In twenty sixteen, so far, we've spent about twenty, just a little over twenty-five thousand, with approximately ten thousand remaining, finishing up some projects that got started late, leaving approximately fifteen thousand for us to carry over for the next year. Melissa has several, several business owners that are already interested in the program for next year. Seeing the four projects that have gotten done, I think has inspired some people to get into it. So what we're asking is that fifteen thousand be carried over in addition to the fifty thousand for the next year, so we can utilize all those funds to expand the program even just a little bit more next year.
And we probably would have used all fifty this year had we approved all the applications, but some of them we had to throw out due to...
We had one dropout. We had some material, building material changes, and that changed the cost of some of the projects. So we had one dropout, and that was a big part of the extra funds that we had.
Right.
We had been awarded a pretty significant portion of the fifty thousand.
Will they reapply?
Yes, they will reapply.
Yeah.
I think if anybody that walks downtown, it's obvious, but Bob told me, you know, it's obvious the buildings that under, that have facade work done. Again, those awarded were E.F. Gas, Rejuvenation Spa, The Home Place, and then the former Tom Sheets Building across the street. And like we said, all the buildings have undergone a huge transformation, and the bugs catching on downtown, that people are getting that idea of, oh, I could do this to my building, and I want to apply for next year, and I already have a file full of new names that are interested for next year. So it being the first year of the program and seeing how things go, I think that it was a success.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I think it also proved the Home Place project. You know, sometimes you're scared to take off this ugly metal front because what's behind it, but it can be fixed.
Yeah.
Looks great, but it's what they had done, so kudos to...
Yeah, as ugly as that metal was, it probably did a good job to protect all the brick for all those years, so...
But the four projects turned out great.
Fellas, are we okay with doing this? I mean, as far as the, in your...
It's not an appropriate account. They would just need to get approval, but council approved, we need to carry that forward.
Essentially, what we're doing is authorizing sixty-five thousand.
Proceeded funds.
Proceeded funds for twenty seventeen.
Right.
Or can it be whatever the remaining balance is once we get all the receipts in this year?
Right. Yeah, it's going to be the fifty plus whatever the remaining balance is.
Yeah, we don't have an exact number.
Plus or minus the fifteen.
Yeah.
Exact, okay.
Yeah.
You're carrying over whatever's on...
Right.
The remainder of the fifty thousand for this year, whatever.
Once all those invoices are done. Sounds fantastic to me.
Make a motion to carry forward any unspent but allocated resources for the facade program in twenty seventeen.
Second. Motion from Cam and a second from Matt to carry over the funds for the facade program. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next thing I have is a request from the Chamber of Commerce.
No.
No.
Denied.
Denied. Letter says, Decatur Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February second. It's the eighty-sixth event of the Chamber. We held the next Columbus. This year, we will continue with the gala fair in appreciation of members of the business community for significance of what their existence means and the economic growth and stability of the area. They give away a large business and a small business award. They have sponsors for that evening. The committee wants to offer a quality, entertaining, and memorable annual meeting, one that will be meaningful and honors the business community. To do so, we need financial support. Last year, the City of Decatur generously gave three hundred and fifty dollars, for which we are grateful. As a contributing sponsor, your business will be appropriately recognized if we so desire, and a formal invitation will follow at a later date. They had different, various levels of sponsorships, and we basically went to the max as far as the sponsorship. I think the city should continue to sponsor, be a main supporter of the Chamber.
I agree. Conflict of interest, I need to step in.
Absolutely.
I did not vote on that.
Yep. Well, you can, we just won't count it.
Okay. Are you waiting for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to...
Prove three hundred and fifty again? Same amount as last year?
Yeah. That's the top amount?
Yes.
Yep.
A motion and a second from Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you.
Is Mike going to be the entertainer again?
Who?
Is Mike going to entertain us again?
The eventuring list?
Oh.
I don't know. I'll work on it. Oh, God. He was all right. Okay, next, we discussed this a little bit at the Board of Works meeting, and that's an interlocal agreement with Adams County Soil and Water Conservation Department to do our stormwater management. I thank you all, well, I guess I need to do it for the sake of the media. We will be having an interlocal agreement with the Adams County Soil and Water Conservation Office specifically for an employee named Tim Graff. Tim is a graduate of Ball State with a natural resources degree, and this should come fairly natural for him as far as managing our stormwater department. We've been without a director of this department since Nate Roomslugg's departure. We're still compliant with everything. We're not really behind on anything. We did meet with the stormwater management director from IDEM, and she's all on board with this. The county is on board with this as far as the commissioners and the county council. And I guess the particulars of it is that it's a, would be paying the county ten thousand four hundred dollars on, that's the annual amount, would be paying it, broken into four quarterly payments, and then the county will use a portion of that. It's actually not all going to go to Mr. Graff. Part of it's going to go for his, that, and then part of it they'll use for whatever they want to use it for. I think it's like about eight thousand of it's actually going to him, but I don't have, that's between the county and him. So anyhow, at the Board of Works meeting, we had a resolution to confirm the board's okay with this, and somewhere in my packet there. You have it? Okay. We have an interlocal agreement that the, that the City Council then needs to approve. Approve. Do we read this, Tim, or do is...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mayor should ask this at Board of Works, but what happens if we replace Nate?
Well, we have a right to get out at any end of quarter.
The end of, end of quarter.
It's for a year, but we have a right to withdraw from the agreement at the end of a quarter.
Now, I would, having said that, I think if we do replace Nate, it might make sense to continue to...
Yeah, cheaper.
And not put that responsibility on a city engineer now.
But it is nice to be able to get out of the contract in a quarter. Right.
Yeah. Tim Graff would be our MS four coordinator, and what that is, is he has to fill out reports to IDEM. He's going to spend eight to ten hours a week performing those types of services for the city. During the remainder of the work week, he's still a county employee. While he's doing work for the city, he would report to the mayor as a supervisor unless there's somebody that the mayor doesn't need. He'd be responsible for doing whatever is required in order to meet our requirements for stormwater management. The, we would, we're paying ten thousand four hundred a year or twenty-six hundred a quarter. He has the right to use county supplies and equipment if he's working at his soil conservation office to do the work. He has the right to use our equipment if he's working, doing our work. The county will be responsible for any overtime compensation. We will be responsible for providing educational supplies and promotional expenses because that's one of the requirements of stormwater management. And then the rest of the agreement are things that are required under the statute just to avoid having to have the AG get involved. So there's a joint board named, which is the mayor, one of the commissioners, and the chairman of the Board of Directors for Soil and Conservation. They kind of oversee the management of this agreement. So something you have to put in there. So what will happen is you'll sign the agreement tonight. Board of Works is ready to sign it. I'll notarize the city signatures. And this will go before the county commissioners and the county council next Tuesday for their approval. I drafted a resolution for county council to approve because you have to have substantially similar resolutions approved by the two executive boards, and then the fiscal bodies have to sign the agreement so that you don't have to get the AG involved. So that's the reason why it's set up the way it is. So that's what, in a nutshell, what the agreement says.
Any questions?
We don't have anybody filling out this paperwork now?
Well, no. And there were, there were some things that probably should have been filled out that kind of, down at the state, at IDEM, the person who kind of drew this whole thing up originally and who was very sticklish on it all...
Is no longer there.
Is no longer there. So a new employee, it's not a new employee, it's somebody who's worked for IDEM for quite a while, but a new person is now doing this. It's new to them, and they've kind of been giving everyone kind of a pass, okay? So we're, we're fortunate that this Reggie is no longer there.
Right. But they're starting to do audits.
They'll be back around.
Yeah, they're starting to do audits. So we've made the state aware what we're proposing to do. State's okay with that, but we have to have this in place fairly soon because they're not going to give us a pass forever.
Mm-hmm. So...
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution two thousand six...
It's just an interlocal agreement.
Approve the agreement and authorize it to be signed by council. Approved by Board of Works. I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement for the stormwater management. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Okay, next up, I'm probably going to ramble a little bit here. I may have to have Melissa flag me down if I get rambling too much. Something I've talked to all of you about, we've mentioned it in Board of Works meetings, but we've never really brought it up publicly in the council meetings, and I think it's time that we do that, and that is a capital campaign project. I'll go back to my days of being a councilman and the day, my days of running for mayor, campaigning, and people coming to me and saying, why doesn't Decatur have this? Why don't we have that? And generally, the things that people would come to me about would be quality of life type projects. I look at Fort Wayne, and I see in their ten-year plan that they're going to spend, or they're proposing to spend like six hundred and fifty million dollars on downtown projects. And with their unemployment rate basically being about the same as Adams County's, they're saying that includes a, the landing, the downtown arena, riverfront area, the steam park, and I can't think of the other one, but there's five projects. It's like six hundred and fifty million dollars. In building all of these new initiatives, it's going to create new jobs in building them all during the construction, there'll be new jobs. And Fort Wayne says that for every one thousand jobs created, seven hundred and fifty people are going to have to move to Fort Wayne. And when I read that, what I, what I perceived was that seven hundred and fifty people are going to have to move to the Fort Wayne area, not Fort Wayne. And I looked at myself, and I, you know, I drove to Fort Wayne for twenty-eight years. My father drove to Fort Wayne and back for forty years, and so did my brother, and a lot of people from Decatur drive to Fort Wayne to work, and there's nothing wrong with that, okay? Tony? Yeah. There's nothing wrong with that. We can improve, we can improve our economy locally, not only by creating new jobs, but by creating a, a quality of life for the families that live here. And if Fort Wayne is going to create all these jobs, then I think that Decatur needs to be prepared. If we're not, then the Auburns and the Columbia Cities and the other communities around us will be. So we need to be ready and be aggressive in making Decatur a place that people want to locate. It's also a proven fact nowadays, I don't have it in writing, but I was told this just last week, that at the mayor's conference, that college graduates nowadays, more of them are moving back in with mom and dad and working and then looking for a job, or they will, if they're married, married, young married couples will decide where they want to live before they find a job. And that, so having a high quality of place, high quality of living nowadays is more important than ever. Now, having said that, the things that people would confront me with, you know, I would, I would hear things like, why don't we have splash pads or a splash pad? Why don't we have better parks than what we have? And in talking with the Greater Decatur Group, we kind of came up with some initiatives that we think would be good quality of life initiatives for Decatur. The first one, and these aren't things that would be done in a year, they're not things that would be done in five years, but probably things that would be done in between five to ten years over, over time. One of them would be developing the riverfront. Obviously, we've bought all these properties along the riverfront with the sewer project that we're just wrapping up. So the riverfront development, as well as anything that we would need to do to Madison Street to kind of bring the two together, okay? That would be one project. We have talked with JPR, which is for Jones Petrie, okay? Is the name of the company? For planning and design service of the riverfront area. They would create a preliminary master plan and a final master plan. The master plan phase would include illustrative master plans along with illustrative perspectives of the riverfront. In addition, JPR would provide an estimate of probable cost for the project, but the design work alone would be not to exceed ten thousand five hundred dollars. A month or two ago, when the redevelopment commission met, and I kind of shared all this with the redevelopment commission, we have received some TIF funds finally, and they kind of want to spend some of that money. And they offered to pay for up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. They would pay half of, yeah, we were assuming that this would cost twenty-five thousand, but it's only going to be ten thousand five hundred. They said they would pay half of up to the twenty-five thousand. So right now, I have five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars committed from them. They meet tomorrow, and I'm going to propose to them when we meet tomorrow that since it's only ten thousand five hundred, that they pay for the entire, the entire, the entire part of it. So that's, that's number one thing, is the first street riverfront development, Madison Street corridor. The second thing would be an aquatics park. The Decatur City Swimming Pool is ninety years old, and Jeremy can vouch for it that we have put a lot of money into the city swimming pool. We lose money on that city swimming pool every year. On a very hot, muggy day, a good day at the swimming pool will get us about a hundred people there. An aquatic park, Jeremy and I and Larry Ish went down to Portland and visited their brand-new park that they just opened this year. On opening day, they had eight hundred people, and they averaged over five hundred people a day at four dollars a person, and they made money. We lose money on our pool every year. There's a lot of sentimental value in that pool here. Almost everyone in this room probably swam in that pool as a kid at one time or another, including the oldest people in here, you know, as, you know, my mom would have swam in that pool. She's ninety-two. So I mean, that pool has been here a long, long time. So it's not that we want to fill it in, it's just that it's not making the city any money, and it's not being utilized to its potential, and I think there's something else that could be better. Now, when I say an aquatics park, what, what Portland has, and it's not saying that's what we would have, it is a swimming pool with a six-lane lap pool. There's an area where you can like play basketball in the water. There's a wading area that starts out at like half inch deep and gradually gets deeper for the little tots. There's a lazy river. There's like a lily pad wading area where you climb across things, and there's a couple of big water slide features, among other things, along with a nice pavilion, concession stand, et cetera. At Portland, just for an example, they allow season passes. They allow you to bring food, and if a mother wants to take her kids there and bring in a picnic and spend the whole day there, they can bring food in and not spend a dime in the concession stand. Yet, when we were there, the whole time we were there, there were probably fifteen people in the concession stand line buying food. It's very impressive, to say the least. I have a lot of pictures, if anyone would like to see them, I can email them to you or whatever, but very impressive place. Jeremy has talked to a company called HWC Engineering. They're the same company that did Portland's. They would, they would do a feasibility study, a public survey, establishment of a local steering committee to develop alternatives for the park. Two initial rendering options, a public meeting showing these options, surveys, environmental services, et cetera, final product plans, budget and project development schedule, along with color renderings. Time frame for that is four to five months, and their cost to develop a plan would be twenty-three thousand dollars. Again, this could be put on Fifth Street where the existing pool is. It could be relocated. That'd be part of the feasibility study. It might make more sense to actually have something like that closer to US twenty-seven where out, because let's face it, we're going to draw people from Bluffton and Van Wert if we do something like this, burn wherever, so just something to consider. The third thing, when people said parks, they were primarily referring to our ballparks. And if you go out to Hannah Nutman, back in forty years ago or so, I think the men were the first ones, they went out there and made a men's slow pitch field. Shortly thereafter, the Little League built Rube Wind Field, and then gradually, you know, the girls' softball diamonds relocated from McMillan Park out there and just kind of blossomed. But there was no rhyme or reason as to how the diamonds were laid out. And here we are in two thousand sixteen, hundreds of people go out there almost every night, and it's dangerous. The parking is terrible. I mean, the parking along the, I'm not sure the name of the road is, that runs along, runs along...
Washington.
Well, Washington's on the north side, and then...
Is that, would that be a...
Mibers, thank you, yeah. But that runs out to the Girl Scout cabin in that area. I mean, that, the traffic is, is bad, and cars are parked on both sides of the road, and little kids are dodging in and out. People are parking in the grass. There's two concession stands, one at each end, that are a long way from most of the ball fields. There's not very adequate restrooms, especially on the boys' end. The girls aren't too bad. But I would propose, again here, that we basically level Hannah Nutman and rebuild it. And in doing so, build it into a couple of clusters of fields. Likely can still put seven fields, which is what's there now, back out there. I have seen, already seen some renderings, and in doing so, we could have seven ball diamonds, and we could have parking, safe parking lots for at least four hundred and fifty or more cars, practice fields, batting cages, good restrooms, good concession stands. Again, Brett Miller from Miller Land Survey has offered a proposal including engineering, site plan, grading plan, utility plan, and erosion control plan, as well as drawings and renderings of the project. Not included in his bidding was lighting, soil testing, a few other things that we're, would have to look into. His, his fee was not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and then he went on to say that he would discount his hourly rate by ten percent to help us out as much as possible. Does not include the construction phase proposal. Again, these are just ideas and plans, but I'm thinking big for our community, and I think that these are three initiatives that would make our community better for this next generation. We have kids going to high school that, one of the things they look at when they're going through high school is getting out of here, you know? We want, we want to, we say we want to attract and retain talent, and I think this is a step in the right direction in doing that. I have rambled long enough.
I guess you've got one question.
Yeah.
I sat through a parks board meeting. Is this the same outfit that did the renderings and did the big talk at the parks board?
Yep.
With Hannah Nutman?
That was Kevin McCrory. He was with a different company then. Are you at Hannah Nutman?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. This is Brett Miller, who's local.
Yeah.
Right here. I think if we...
I guess I had everything all drawn up and talking about the same thing you do.
Yeah.
You talk about the clusters, the new parking, new lighting and all that. I mean, it's...
This is basically kind of a, kind of a...
It was all done, didn't it?
No, 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 that was just an idea. We never did it.
It's conceptual what could be. It wasn't tested to see if it actually could happen.
Yeah.
If I remember, I mean, did they pay ten to twelve thousand dollars to have it done?
I don't recall. I don't think. I think, I think that was kind of a, that was a teaser that he gave us that was probably free, which is kind of what I have now from Brett Miller. He's kind of, already kind of shown me something that he, that he thinks he can do. Now he would have to actually, but I was at that same meeting, Al, and it would be very similar to that, yeah.
It was Kevin McCrory, and it was after Stellar One.
Yeah.
And he basically worked alongside the park board and, and because this, because in the, in the initial... the park board and, and because this, because in the, in initial, what, where were we going to focus on for Stellar? We were all talking about everything, and we brought it up this issue, and we ultimately condensed it to the downtown core, but that spurred on another conversation where Kevin took and drew, he did, he, he had everything up.
Well, I've never heard, well, yeah, let's get it done if you've got $2 million to do it, you know?
Well, but I think, I think this is kind of the part that, where it comes next, is that, you know, we, we have, we've talked a lot of things to our community, we've asked for money, and a lot of them have stepped forward and given money. It was in good faith, with no concrete, well, what's it going to look like? And see, these things right here will give us the tangible, hey, here's what we're asking for, this is what we want to accomplish, which I think kind of goes into, and you haven't asked about this yet, we also want to ask for...
In closing, in closing, these three relatively major initiatives, how would we pay for them? We would have a, I'm going to call it a North Adams County capital campaign, okay? In Stellar One, we went out and we asked approximately 30 businesses, people, if they would donate money over a period of years, and just with 30 entities, we had $675,000 pledged. So, if we take this to everyone who has a Decatur address, now, that would include everyone at, all the way to the Wells County line, that would include everyone to the Allen County line, everyone to the Ohio line, and everyone north of Monroe. It's a big area. Decatur is their community. They don't live in Decatur, but that's where they shop. If they want to go to a water park, if their kids play ball, they play ball here. If they want to come for quality-of-life initiatives like concerts or whatever kind of things we'd utilize at the, I don't, not even sure what would be on the riverfront, but these are things that everyone in the north part of the county would be tied to. So, yeah, we could send a letter out and that'd be it, okay? We might get a little response. But to do this and to do this right, we would have to hire a marketing agency. You have to spend money to make money. And in Stellar, that was all part of the plan. And we had figured $50,000 to hire a marketing agency to take this out for us and, and promote it, okay? So, that's kind of the last bit to my plea here, is I, I would like to ask council this evening for the okay to work with JPR on the First Street Development, to work with HWC Engineering on Aquatics Park, to work with Miller Land Surveying on Hannah Nutman, just to come up with the plans. Once we have the plans, I would also like this evening, the okay from council to put out an RFP to various marketing agencies for them to market this for us and take it to the public, and that this would be a capital campaign venture that would likely, like I said, some of these things, I would visualize personally the riverfront development going first because it's there, it's bare, and it's ready to go. You know, maybe that's something that can happen in the next couple of years. The next thing, whether it's the aquatics park or the Hannah Nutman ball diamonds, might be two, three, four years down the road. But we get, get, you know, one family may be able to give $20 a year for five years, another family might be able to give $1,000 a year for, for five years. But whatever the level is, if we get everyone to take ownership of this community, I think we can improve the quality of life. Can you piggyback on that, Cam?
We, all, all we're doing is implementing the plans that we've already adopted. This is, I mean, we kept on referring to Stellar, but what Stellar did is got us a strategic plan. It is our strategic plan, and that's what we're implementing. So, and that was all based on quality-of-life initiatives. It's, it's a furtherance of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan talks about our downtown core, talks about the railroad core, talks about 13th Street Corridor, talks about the park system, talks about the riverfront, right? So, all we're doing is moving forward. The Stellar Communities piece was very centralized to the downtown. There was a downtown plan of the comprehensive plan, right? It was, there's a downtown focus area. We took that and we developed it, and that's what we're implementing now, to include the facade program, to include the Five Points intersection. Now, we're simply expanding that vision beyond the downtown. It's still a comprehensive plan that was adopted, it's enforced, and we're looking at these other areas that were already identified, and it's just, it's putting meat on the bones and getting to the point where we can go out and say, okay, yep, we came from concept to a specific plan, now we're ready to implement, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, and we need your help. And that's really what we're doing. I would say also, in this hometown collaborative initiative that we are doing with Oprah, you know, it ultimately comes down to three different areas that they focus on: quality of life, economic development, and, and leadership development, meaning more, growing more volunteers and more people within our community. I think it's interesting, like, when we were just yesterday talking a lot about these things, we've done a pretty good job, I think, of focusing on the quality of life, we get it, we understand how that fits in, and I think our community can get behind it. And through the community forums that we're going to have with the HCI, you know, I think we're going to give them more direction on the priorities. But I, but I think, you know, the other thing the comprehensive plan talks to is the economic development piece, and we've done some of that with the TIF district, redevelopment commission, but all I see this is this, we're actually implementing the plans that we have in place, and we're going to take these next steps and look at, you know, what are economic development things within our community. So, to me, it's a natural form of what we've already committed to. Did you have a number of the marketing?
$50,000.
That was, that's what we said to the strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, if we put it on RFP or RFQ, I'm not sure what you call it, to marketing agencies, you might get three, you might get five agencies that come in and, and we, we put the $50,000 figure on there, they'll show us what they will do for us for $50,000, how they will market it. And then we would select from that who we think has the best package.
So, the other ones are, are already kind of determined, Brett Miller, HWC, whatever it was?
We know the actual costs.
Yeah. But the next one will be a...
Next one...
HWC, White Men Petri, and JPR, right? So, we're really looking at, depending on what the redevelopment commission comes back with.
Right.
We're still looking at, right at $100,000 total.
Yes. Oh, and by the way, and talking with Phyllis about all of this, should redevelopment not cover the $10,500, she has funds in the Riverboat Fund that she could cover that. The aquatics park, she tentatively has that budgeted in our seed-up money for next year, that $23,900. And the Hannah Nutman ball, ball field, she has tentatively earmarked out of CCD funds. The, the $50,000 marketing, um, do you remember, Phyllis? Yeah, right here it is.
What I was suggesting is, in council's budget transfer and the building improvement, there's some extra money in there, transferring into professional services, and then encumber that into the new year, because I'm assuming we wouldn't spend this marketing money.
Till next year.
Till next year. That's my suggestion.
So, we have the current money, and we just encumber?
I just, I didn't come here tonight just to ask for this without having, without talking to Phyllis first.
Good planning.
So, you know it can be done?
We know it can be done, yes.
All right. We've been covering some money from this year.
So, discussion from this half the room over here, anybody?
We've been talking, it's time to act. As Cam stated, we, these are projects we've been looking at for some time in the city, in Mayor Schultz's administration, now in your administration. This isn't new. It's time to move forward.
Thank you.
Agree, agree.
Same ages are rest, the guys. I guess my question would be, you're putting, we're putting, I understand what you're doing, you're putting all this money to get more money in, but what about people that already put $600,000 in and haven't seen anything done in town?
Well, this, this, that's...
They're asking, when are we going to get started?
That's why we...
Right, but we're talking another five to six years. Are those people that already put the money in and never seen nothing happen for five or six years, are they going to get discouraged?
No. Because I, I really think the riverfront thing will probably come to fruition in 12 to 15 months or so, we, we would, we would be on that.
And that excitement could be such that, like Hannah Nutman, I see few people, families, maybe stepping right up and paying the bill.
Keep in mind, when, when I say hiring a marketing firm, some of the things that they would, would do would be to come up with sponsorships, you know, like at Hannah Nutman, you could sell bricks, pavers, you can have sponsorships for the concession stands, you can have sponsorships for the ball diamonds, each one can have a name, a corporate sponsor.
When people got excited, look what happened in Monroe.
Exactly.
I would say, to your point, the people who have made those commitments, that was kind of, when we went back and asked for that money, kind of going around to, it was for very specific projects that was identified in the Stellar Plan, that would have been Madison Street, streetscapes, and so those are still on the table. I mean, those are still things that we're pursuing, but that money, all of that donated money, our earmark were, was for those specific projects. This is kind of above and beyond.
And I, I probably should announce this right now, and that is that we did, I know, Melissa, I'm sorry. We did find out Thursday of last week, we applied for a $500,000 grant for Madison Street. We did not get it, okay? It was an 80-20 grant where we would have had to put up $100,000. We've got $100,000 already to go toward Madison Street budget. The $500,000 grant, you know, we would have made that a $600,000 project, however, when you do something through a grant, it costs more money, there's more, more things to check off the list and more hoops to jump through because you're doing it through the state. If you do that same project that might cost $600,000, and you just, we do it ourself and don't involve the state, we might be able to do it for $350,000 to $400,000. So, grants are good and grants are bad, but regardless, I, I'm committed to wanting to make that Madison Street thing happen. I think it's, especially this past year with the concert series we had, and I talked to Alex Mendez yesterday, and some of the bands that they have booked for next year, they even have like a miniature symphony coming next year. It's 12 people, I think, from the Four Wing Philharmonic, and, and, I mean, there's going to be some really neat venues that we're bringing in next year, so.
Craig's got things really moving.
I know he does, yeah. We, you know, we have a Jimmy Buffett tribute band coming, and there's a lot of, yeah, Chambers got things going.
Sure, you had Bob out there.
How much money left in that capital? All that money still there?
It's all there. Well, it's not there, it's pledged.
Well, pledged, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We've only actually received $150,000-ish.
Yeah. Is that the community foundation?
Many donors that are paying them.
They're paying them, yeah, they're paying installments, installments.
I'd be impressed.
But like, like Tyler just said, and I go along with him because that's the way I believe, I, I think it's, we need to get something started so people start seeing some relation to this.
Maybe we're having two different conversations here, maybe I'm in a different place. I understand what you're doing here, and I think this is great, but I don't think because we lost that grant that Madison Street gets put on the back burner, we focus on these next year, and then Madison Street still sits. I'm thinking...
No, Madison Street and First Street will all be one.
Well, but I, if you do that, now you're tying Madison Street to the riverfront development, and you're not leaving that as a separate thing. To me, and I guess this is just my opinion, I think Madison Street needs to go, and it needs to go now, not after you get all this, we already paid for the design of that. I mean, Madison Street is designed for that grant, so I think we need to have enough money to do, at least do Madison Street, or maybe that's a greater Decatur decision. I, I would tend to agree with you. I mean, that we committed towards that.
Get something... Tangible that you can see.
Tangible, they start coming, and I was thinking, well, we're on Madison Street, sure would be nice to go down First Street, I'll give a lot of money to get on to First Street.
Tyler, Main Street is right behind that, but Main Street wants to make it happen now, so...
I mean, that's two different conversations, but, Jeremy?
You're going to see a lot of things happening in 17, you know, for example, you have the highway project, you have the...
Sure do.
...minority out here. We're still planning on replacing the sidewalks and stuff, all the minority street, the light poles and stuff like that, so you're all going to see a lot happening in 17, you know, with, with just those two projects alone. Ken and I have talked about a lot of different little projects here and there, we've talked about Madison Street, you know, how we can get Madison Street completed. One thing you also have to keep in mind, with Madison Street, you're going to have to do something with Schaefer Building. That's going to have to be done and out there before you tackle that. You know, there's a lot of paving projects going on.
And it's going to.
And as we pull together, and as we've been pulling together for the last two or three years, we're going to make these things happen. You know, there's budgeted money set out there every year for sidewalk program, or, you know, paving, or different things, that once we sit down and start planning, we can start attacking some of this stuff, whether some of it's in-house, whether some of it's contracted and so on and so forth, and we're all going to start making a difference, you know, in the short term. Yeah, we've taken some hits from being denied a lot of these grants, you know, we're going to be stronger from them, we're going to get the stuff done. We're probably going to get it done a little cheaper with, with some local contractors, with our help, and get the projects done quickly.
In all honesty, I think not getting Stellar two years in a row only made this city better.
Much more determined.
I, I'm not saying anything negative, but I'm just looking down there, and I think the plan is awesome. But my personal opinion is, is let's get Madison, then tackle, I mean, if we can tackle one of these at a time instead of laying out cash for somebody to design it, and then two years down the road, we got to redesign it because the costs went up. If you want to take one, I'm on board with it.
We have to have, we have to have some kind of a plan for the marketing agency to put this whole thing together for us.
I think you're talking about really two different things. I think what Craig and Tyler are saying, and Cam, I think, agreed, let's tackle Madison Street now. We've got the plan already in place, so if you guys feel you got the finances, whether it's public funds, or a combination of public funds and the capital campaign funds, to get that project done, I think while you're doing that, you still need to get these other plans in place so that you can't hire a marketing agency to go forward.
You can't hire a marketing agency to market this for us until we have the plan.
They have to have something specific, so I think it's really a two-pronged thing. You're talking about doing the Madison Street plan now, but you're also appropriating the funds to get these other studies done, and get the marketing agency in place so that once Madison Street's done, you can move right on to the next thing and raise the funds for your capital campaign.
Right, and I guess I'll go back to you, and Phyllis, help me out, so, we had established, it's not necessarily certainly set aside, but we had committed to spending, on average, $500,000 a year on capital improvement projects. Is this coming out of that budget, $100,000, is that coming out of the $500, so?
Well...
The point is, but we didn't spend all of that, you know, set aside this year, we have essentially the same amount next year, so I agree, like, we've committed to capital improvement projects, let's, what's the priority right now? And as I look at 2017, we've got, we've got Madison Street, we've got Five Points, which we got to figure out, I mean...
We have a, we have a nature preserve that's going to be adding about over a half-mile of, of walking trails.
But, you know, those are, and then, of course, the removal of the Schaefer Building.
The Schaefer Building coming down.
And that depends on BIGS, too.
And then the BIGS project.
Regardless, with or without the BIGS thing, we're going to have the Schaefer Building coming down.
But those are, yeah, those are things that we need to be pushing our capital money towards now, which would include the donated money or the pledged money for those projects. This, to me, is all after, or...
I guess then, but my question is, do we have the money to move forward with Madison Street? You're going to take $100,000 away from it.
No, that's already been committed.
We have $100,000.
We have the $100,000 that we had budgeted for it, if we got the grant, we can continue to get that money in there, okay? We have some of the money from the, the capital campaign money that's already, we can, we can, we can draw that.
So, your question is, are we taking away, if we, if we commit to Madison Street, because because we're spending 100,000?
My idea is, we're just, we're spreading so far out, nothing's gonna get done, and two years down the road, we're gonna be sitting at the same table and saying, well.
We've got our plans.
Well, we got more plans, but what have we done? And we're all sitting here saying, well, we got the plans, we haven't done nothing.
Well, I think with priority, and you, and have we laid out a priority that we wanna knock out Madison first?
Absolutely.
And then, I mean, what is the, what's your timeline on those things? I know you said between five and 10, but we do have a priority, I think with the priorities, I'm, I'm willing to.
I'm, I'm willing to, I think it's a good idea to go forward, I really do.
Yeah, I think we've gotta publicize what our priority line is, so that people can understand and get in line with, okay, this is what our timeline is gonna be on these projects.
I think we definitely need to sit down, part of the later discussions, and, and figure out how we do tackle Madison outside of the.
This year.
And I realize that there's, we still gotta see what's gonna happen with the Schaefer Building and all that, but if we can tie it all together.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if we're at the point where that Schaefer Building's coming down, then it can all be kind of working on the same time, it'd be better.
Well, you got heavy equipment there.
Whether it's without Kevin, or however it works, but we're all on the same page at that point.
And that's.
Yeah.
If on their budget, it's.
For Schaefer.
One way or another.
One way or another.
It's coming down.
It's coming down, yeah. She's, it's coming down in the spring, it'll come down in the fall.
And as of right now, there's 100,000 budgeted for Madison. You got another 150 sitting in the, in the bucket with more coming in next year.
Well, another 100, you don't got 150 in the bucket, you need for the capital campaign, and more money coming in next year from the.
Madison Street will happen.
Did he come up with a estimate with that drawing? Six hundred, did he come up with a price estimate for his drawing?
Yeah, it was the grant application, we were doing with the budget.
What, the budget, was that 600,000, or was it?
Close to the 800.
800,000?
But, that was doing it through the state, the state where you have to cross every T, dot every I, jump through every hoop.
If you're federal fund, such as your project, you are required to kick in digs to get involved.
Yep.
And if the city would do it on our own, it would be a different.
Weight scale.
We would have been out, we would have been better, that, that extra cost would be more, you know, like.
Does he have a price in that, or?
So, um, we're gonna be.
We can get it.
Next week for Oprah on the Madison Street project, Kevin McCullough, we have part of that meeting to design Madison Street, and it'll be kind of, I had a deep with him, I thought, okay, let's talk about real costs. That's what we do, if we went to a state grant, what we're gonna do, what, how would it go if it'd be priced locally?
But, I mean, you, you, you know, a lot of the Madison Street, there's gonna be a lot of concrete work there, okay? We got good concrete people in the city that we can utilize, uh, but a lot of that can be done locally. Some of our own staff can do some of the work down there, so, we can save a lot of money doing it ourself without the state.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
We'll just get away to D-Brake next week and see what our options are.
Right.
I, I think you guys make some valid points, I think you need to sit down and you lay out your, your priorities, you lay out a schedule, so that people understand, this is where we're going, this is the timeframe in which it's gonna be done, we're working on these other plans, it's gonna lead to marketing, and our request for you to help, help fund it.
Yeah, I'm not saying that this is gonna be totally community-funded, I mean, net, we're going to act, you know, through these next years, have to put money in our budget to go toward them as well, it's not gonna be totally paid for by the, the public, I mean, we're gonna have to, if we can raise half of it, you know, that's, half of it, we don't have to find the funds for, so. But, yes, I think we're all in agreement that this year we need to, uh, come up with our way of knocking out Madison Street, along with getting the Schaefer Building down, but my request tonight is, uh, to okay the funding for these three plans, as well as up to $50,000 for a marketing campaign. Not that we're gonna spend that this year, just, but I, I, you can't do the marketing campaign, we can't even put that RFP out to marketing agencies without having these plans.
So, this is really a next phase beyond Madison Street?
Yeah.
Is what you're talking about?
Yeah. A long-term capital campaign plan.
I will make a motion to proceed with the plans that the mayor set before us with the, uh, riverfront.
Aquatics Park.
Aquatics Park and the ball diamonds at Henan Nutman, uh, preparing those plans with then also, uh, bidding out for a marketing firm, uh, with the prices as he has.
Not to exceed these prices.
Provided, not to exceed those.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, I have nothing else on my agenda. Uh, on Mayor's report tonight, I just wanna say one thing. Um, this community was, uh, thrown for a, a bit, we had a big bomb hit the community when a little 12-year-old wrestler went down on his neck, head, and his dad ran out on the mat, and he said, "Dad, I can't feel my hands, I can't feel my feet, I think I broke my neck." And they took him to Parkview Hospital, at Parkview, they did some tests, and they said that he was having some bleeding in the ligaments surrounding his, his, uh, vertebrae, so they transferred him to Riley Hospital, and now, that was two days ago, it was Sunday. So, Monday, they, uh, did surgery, last night at this time, he was in surgery, and they went in and they put steel rods and screws in his back and fused, uh, the disc between discs two and five, fused that whole area together. Remington Boltemeyer, son of Corbin and Lisa Boltemeyer, uh, I'll tell you what, some people aren't big fans of social media, but when that went, when Corbin Boltemeyer went and posted, "We need prayers for our son," and it was amazing how many people in this community rallied together in support, and praying for, for little Remy, and, uh, I just think it, it's amazing, and it, you just don't get that in anywhere. I mean, a small-town life, there's something to be said for everyone knowing everyone, and, uh, a lot of people know the Boltemeyer family, and, uh, today, Remy is out of surgery, and he's, uh, off the ventilator, and there's pictures of him on Facebook tonight giving a thumbs up, so, with a smile on his face, and he's not gonna be paralyzed, uh, he's gonna be, he's gonna be totally normal and fine, he may not be able to play contact sports anymore, which will be hard for him, because he's a tough little athlete, uh, so, I just wanna kinda thank.
He's 12.
He's 12. I just wanna thank the community publicly for all the prayers that, that went up for the Boltemeyer family, specifically for Remy, and all the doctors that treated him last night and the last couple of days. Department heads, Greg.
I'm fine, thank you.
Roger.
Nothing else, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Bill?
Getting worse.
Roger had a good day today, we had a department head meeting today, Roger was the first one there, he turned the lights on in the room. Very un-Roger-like. Jeremy?
Uh, just as a reminder, lead collection ends this week, this Friday, uh, it's into recycle week, so participation on recycling's been pretty well. Um, we are doing cardboard collection every week this week, or every week this month, due to the holiday season, we always have a.
Lot of carton.
Outrage of some old cardboard, and takes up a lot of running of garbage trucks that we're, we're recycling that. Another Nando, everything's going pretty good, all the winter equipment's ready to rock and roll, or whatever, Mother Nature.
I hope you don't need it.
She's gonna turn, but, uh, other Nando, everything's pretty well.
Jim, you got anything bad you wanna say about Les, he's not here?
Nothing.
Nothing? Melissa? Public? Council members?
Since I brought him up earlier. City engineer, if we, if in fact, end up buys back the project or whatever, would it behoove us to have an in-house engineer for that? I, I feel like the sewer project went pretty well, um, but if we had, in any fact, our engineer did not have to deal with stormwater.
Um, I got a question on that.
Sure, it very well could be, but I kinda have some other, other things that we can talk about.
Okay.
I think it would be our best interest to hire an engineer, uh, an engineer or a project manager to help with these things. Um, if we're gonna sub it out to other engineering firms every time something comes down the line, then why, why waste our money? I mean, if you're gonna continue to, if we're gonna continue to hire outside engineering firms to.
You're still gonna have to hire outside engineering firms, because if, even if we have an engineer on staff, he's not going to.
Sign off.
Sign off.
Well, that's my point, yeah.
Engineer is good for writing bid texts and reviewing contracts.
Well, I agree.
Detailing that.
I think we need to figure out what our priorities are gonna be with this person. What do we really need to have?
We have some ideas in the works that I can't really reveal tonight, uh, like I said, we, we have the money in the budget for city engineer right now, and, uh, we can tell you more later, that's all I can say right now.
But, there is a void there, but we need to.
Mm-hmm.
I agree, that needs to be filled.
Pay some bills, we've got three weeks worth.
Should we pay the claims?
Oh, not yet.
Just one thing, uh, the Redevelopment Commission meets tomorrow night, and they won't meet again till January 4th, and council and mayor need to appoint, if you wanna reappoint these members, and when we have our meeting, we'll see if they wanna serve again, and then I'll get their certificate of appointment checked, so, right now, um, mayor appoints Rex Henske, he suggested he would appoint, uh, he, um, serve again, Max Miller, Ron Story, and council appointed John Craig Gressit and Larry Ish, and Larry said he would serve again.
Craig hasn't been asked yet?
He hasn't responded yet.
He hasn't responded, okay. We'll hit him up tomorrow at the meeting.
If you guys, are you willing to reappoint these people, if they say yes, that's all I need to know.
Yes. Yes. I attend those meetings, and I will say that they're all engaged in, in the meetings, and I think they, they all enjoy being on that committee, and, yeah, it's a good, good group, so.
Thank you.
That's all you have? Now, Greg.
I need to refuse myself from the claims, because I have acquaintance.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, motion to pay the claims?
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same, thank you. We're adjourned.